I just, there's no way we're gonna get done this year. It's not, not heat, they don't heat the building. So, we said, three weeks ago, you've got two choices you can just think for a thousand dollars and try to build a building, or we can, um, let it down. I don't think it's fair when you come back and ask. And say, okay.
Three more.
Yeah. But, I mean, they're still picking up.
Well, the good news is, the YouTube video is starting.
Good.
Okay, we can get started. Uh, please turn your microphones on and pull them forward, as always. You all set, Gene? Okay. I'd like to call the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one meeting of the Town and Niskuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission to order. Ms. Fodie, please call the roll.
Mr. LaPlum?
Here.
Mr. Darpino?
Here.
Mr. Oster?
Here.
Mr. McPart- Park- uh, McPartland?
Here.
Our Mrs. Scrubutanes?
Here.
Ms. Gold?
Present.
And Chairman Walsh?
Here. Okay, uh, we have, uh, we'll move right down the agenda pretty quickly. It looks like we have, uh, no minutes to approve tonight. No public hearings tonight, so we'll go right to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning zoning matters, Town and Niskuna, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak tonight, here's your chance. And then I'll ask Laura, since it probably won't be anybody in the audience tonight. Do we have anybody online that want to speak, or any communications, email, or letters received?
Um, Michelle, did you want to speak, or just listen?
I just wanted to listen at this point, Laura, thank you.
Right. So, is there anybody else online with the phone numbers that wanted to speak under privilege of the floor?
Well, okay, I have two letters to read.
Okay.
I'll read them off of my... Thirteen, so this is letters from Steph, Stephen and Daniela Sina, fourteen-twenty Via Del Mar, and regarding thirteen-fifty-six Balltown Road, application for site plan review for ten town home buildings. In two thousand and eighteen, we moved from Long Island to Niskuna and chose to purchase a home on Via Del Mar due to the low traffic, calm, and family environment that the block and the neighborhood provided. Coming from a high-traffic, busy neighborhood in Nassau County, Long Island, we are strongly opposed to the proposed plan for ten townhomes on Balltown Road. As we will undoubtedly know, this will provide an unnecessary increase in traffic to an already busy and overly congested Balltown Road. In addition, this will inevitably increase cut-through traffic on Alton, Barcelona, Almeria, ultimately affecting Via Del Mar, Clifton Park, and other residential cross streets. This will be due to an increase in people using these blocks as a shortcut, or easier pass-through to Knott Street, Grand Boulevard, and Union Street, as opposed to drivers normally using Balltown Road. We already have seen an increase in the past three years of cut-through traffic to Knott Street, which makes our block a less quiet, higher-traffic, and overall less family-safe appeal that caused us to purchase our home in the first place. Please consider rejecting the proposal and help to keep this wholesome, safe, and quiet portion of Old Niskuna intact, rather than introducing another busy prospect that will ultimately cause homeowners like myself and my family to look for alternative places to live. So I know I have another one here, if you just wanna give me a second. Okay, here. This comment, this comment is regarding the site plan application for ten town home buildings at thirteen-fifty-six Balltown Road. To be brief, this is a terrible idea. That section of Balltown Road near CBS has become burdensome for several reasons. The most obvious reason is the traffic congestion, but there are other resident residual impacts, such as adding to our already overcrowded buildings in the school district. Further, approval of this application would only lead to more frustrated drivers turning off of Balltown Road and speeding through the neighborhoods. Someone is going to get hit or worse by these drivers. When will the town stop entertaining the idea of building in this area? Heaven forbid that the houses are simply demolished and the area is left as green space. Please consider the safety and well-being of our town residents. Michael Fedett, fifteen forty-nine Myron Street. That's all I have.
Okay, and that's all the comments. Anyone else for privilege of the floor? For our closed privilege of the floor? Hearing or seeing no one, our closed privilege of the floor. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we'll move right to new business. Under new business, we have two resolutions tonight. The first resolution being Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-eight, a resolution for site plan approval of antennas for wireless communication at One Research Circle. One Research Circle, and that's GE. And, uh, the, the resolutions, both the resolutions were, uh, posted on the town website. Uh, and as usual-
He's a bad dude. They're all bad, like-
So the person with the phone number that ends in zero-nine, you need to mute yourself?
He left his dog.
He didn't take his dog, he moved out of the mansion and left the dog behind.
No, because they're on the phone.
It is.
Okay, Laura. Okay, again, this is, uh, Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-eight for the, uh, cellular antenna, uh, communication at the One Research Center on the water tower. Now therefore be it hereby further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds that the site plan referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and hereby approves this site plan with the following conditions. One, additional wireless antennas may be added in the future upon the approval of a building permit. Mr. LaPlum, do I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Motion to approve the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Oster. And any discussion?
Uh, no, we've, we've had this project for some time. We know that there's gaps in, in coverage. There's, you know, been some changes, and this is gonna give perhaps the coverage we need, or that we're, we're not seeing in areas we thought we might with some of the other changes. So, no, I don't think we have any else to add.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, and, and the, uh, this allows any future co-, uh, co-location on the water tower to receive just the building permit, so they won't have to come in front of the board or the town board again in order to, uh, proceed, uh, with, of course, the approvals of the appropriate personnel. Any other discussion at all? No, uh, who's gonna call the rolls? Is that Clark, or is it, um, is it Ms. Fodie?
Can you call the roll?
Yeah.
I can call the roll, sure. Mr. LaPlum?
Aye.
Mr. Scrubutanes?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Uh, did, did you get Mr., Ms. Gold? Did you get Ms. Gold? Okay. Okay, the resolution's approved, so, thank you, and, uh, look forward to at least improvement in some areas in coverage. All right, second resolution, type of Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-nine. This is a resolution for site plan approval, a monument sign for Knott's Landing Apartments at twenty-three forty, Knott Street East. And again, I'll just summarize. Further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds that the site plan referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and hereby approves the site plan. Uh, this resolution includes a couple of waivers tonight. Um, it exceeds the square footage by four square foot, so we're providing a waiver for that for the signage. Uh, also, uh, five acres are required, and there's two-point-five-three acres available on the site, and obviously, they need a sign, so we're giving a waiver for the two-point-four-seven acres to allow the sign to go forward. Do I have a motion on this resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, resolution's been moved by Mr. Diopino, Mr. Diarpino. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. McPartland. Any discussion? If there's anything else to say, is it makes, uh, uh, since the application that we received and, uh, the update, uh, the sign will be parallel to Knott Street East, uh, be lit, and, and only wording on the one side that faces the street. Uh, so, looks like a nice design, so just allow that to go forward. Any other discussion or comments from the board? Hearing none, Mr. Uh, Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaPlum?
Aye.
Mr. Scrubutanes?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Thank you. We'll close new business and move on to our discussion items for tonight. First up being twenty-one forty-seven Eastern Parkway. This is a mixed-use building for medical professional office and apartments that requiring a special use permit. And Mr. Diarpino is project lead, and we have an applicant online tonight. We have Mr. Lisi online, or representative.
Yeah, I know we, um, we reached out to him and asked, didn't wanna remove it from the agenda because he has seemed to be, he had said that he wanted to be at the last meeting and then wasn't able to attend, but there isn't actually any changes on the plan since two meetings ago, so all of the outstanding items remain. Um, and I don't know if he was able to touch base with you today, or not, Clark, but, I mean, we, we're just gonna continue to ping him on these items until we get resolution. But the other thing that's happening is tomorrow, the town board's taking action on the special use permit. So, even though, like, we kept it on here in case he wanted to come and do an update, but, like, truly, like, tomorrow is a big milestone day for him.
Right.
And then we can start working out more of the details as well.
Anything you want, would like-
Yeah, Laura, I haven't heard from him today, but that's exactly right. He wanted to keep moving forward, uh, while he was in the process of having the town board take action tomorrow, so that's why we kept him on.
Do you have anything you'd like to add, David, on this?
I have nothing to add at this time.
Okay, uh, uh, the agenda statement lists the open items as far as we are today, so if anybody's curious what they are, they're all posted on the Niskuna website. Nothing else on the subject? We'll move on. Okay, nothing else on twenty-one forty-seven Eastern Parkway. Next is thirty-four-ten State Street. This is a site plan application for an addition at Upstate Guns and Ammo. Again, Mr. Diarpino?
So, uh, Mr. Sirafani, uh, was able to get through zoning, um, the project did pass. We did establish a couple of milestone dates, um, one of which would be September sixteenth of twenty-twenty-one, where he was to have, um, basically the project drawings together to get moving forward with construction. There's a lot of things-
I'm sorry, but they can't hear you unless you're literally, like, speaking loudly into your microphone. Like, even louder than that.
Yeah, pull it right forward, Dave.
Right in your face.
We, we can actually hear him pretty well, Laura.
Can you? Okay, good.
Yeah.
Great.
Never been accused of being quiet. Okay. So, so where, where Mr. Sirafani is at this point, where's, you know, he, he's working with, um, a new team of design professionals to get the drawings up to speed so he can actually produce a building set. The information that you've seen in here is stuff that's just been, uh, regurgitated from the last few meetings. Um, I did speak with Mr. Sirafani today, and, um, the recommendation that I'm going to propose to the board tonight would be, um, to acknowledge the September sixteenth, um, deadline that we established because of the metal storage container that he wanted to keep there. I believe he's shown a commitment to the project, he's gone through many, many meetings, and he's gonna need a little bit more time to finish up the permit set of drawings. So what I'd like to do is, um, give him another three-month extension to finish the drawings, so that he would have a full set that goes into the building department for review. We would see it at some point when it gets more refined, and also have him present to the Architecture Review Board, um, within about a month's time to get the initial feedback.
Paul Briggs is now a Planning Board milestone, that was as condition of the zoning board's approval of the temporary variance.
My understanding is that, what you just said is that that was a zoning board time, correct?
It's the zoning board timeframe.
I don't have a good answer for you. I think that we're bound by that.
Unless he goes back to the zoning board?
Yes.
He has to reappeal?
I mean, they're semi-judicial when they make a decision, like, the Planning Board can't overturn the zoning board. And the zoning board only wanted to grant a temporary variance for the, and the way that it's written is that he has to have site plan approval, like, you ha- you have to go back to the zoning board, which was explained to Mr. Seraphini, by the way.
Oh, that's correct. We're bound, he's bound by that date.
Yep. So, I mean, I can understand the Planning Board wanting to work with the applicant, I think that's great, and I commend it, but the, the timeline was pretty written in stone. So I think the, the only thing that I would know how to do is to cite him, because he's now in violation, he won't, he'll be in violation of the code, which we talked about, because he didn't meet his timelines, and then he has to go back to the zoning board.
And that would be Sep- September sixteenth, I think, was the date, or nineteenth, right? It was when he'd be in violation?
Yeah, September sixteenth. Unless you can get, Craig, unless you can get your drawings into us, like, you can do some kind of a site plan approval on September thirteenth. You gotta move it.
I'm doing the best I can, unfortunately, you know, it's beyond my control with the, the engineering people and whatnot, you know? We, we didn't make it until, what was it, July twenty-first, I believe, in front of zoning, and as my engineer has very, very not tactfully explained to me, he's like, "I can't do this in three weeks," which is what brought us to today. Now, all that said, obviously, I'm doing everything I can to bring it forward. My question is this, when is the next zoning board meeting?
Um, well, I mean, truly, like, if, if you don't think you can have it done by Sep- September thirteenth, like, like Clark and I need to get with the attorneys, and we'll give you next steps, but like, um, it's not, it's like, this, it's citation and going to the zoning board, and it's not good, for the record.
Okay, but when is the next zoning board meeting?
It's the third week in September.
So we're gonna, we're gonna run out of days a week before the meeting, roughly?
The Planning Board meeting is the day, is the September thirteenth. If you can have something to us by, you know, in the next week or two, you, you can be on the Planning Board meeting, but the zoning board meeting is different. That's what I mean, you have to be, like, cited, and we have to look at what the process is to get you back before the zoning board.
Well, I guess where I'm failing to understand is, if my guy does get plans in, so we have the, uh, Plan Board review that before the next meeting, does that satisfy everything? Or are we still in the same situation where maybe now we should plan to approach zoning and explain the situation, request an additional three months, so that we can bring everything to conclusion without, you know, citing something that, obviously, if it doesn't meet the letter of the law, is one hundred percent meeting the intent of the resolutions and whatnot that have previously passed.
Um, if you got the final stuff that's on your checklist to us by the September thirteenth meeting, then you're meeting the letter of the law.
And if a decision isn't rendered at that meeting, because, I don't know, if there's changes required or anything else, where do we go? What do we do?
Then you're in violation of your zoning board appeals approval, and you have to remove the pod from your property.
Okay. I, I have no problem continuing down the path that we are, but I personally think that we need to address this for the zoning board as a contingency plan, and I, I would like to find out what step is necessary to be able to go in front of them and make that rip last.
Yeah, I have to talk with the legal department about that.
So, Laura and I will have further discussions, but if you don't meet that deadline and the pod's still there, what she's saying is, the town will then issue you a citation, and that will then allow you to go to the zoning board to ask for relief from that. So that's the process.
Now, with that citation, are, are we talking about fines, or is it a citation? And if you don't take action, then there would be further steps.
So, I'm never one to push for fines. We, we just want things done properly. The last thing we ask for is for monetary sanctions, but we're willing to work with you, but there's a process, as Laura says, that we have to follow, and they, zoning board is independent of the planning board, so that's-
Absolutely, and I, I understand, and I, I think, obviously, with the number of meetings I've been at, and I'm assuming you y'all can extrapolate the amount of money that I put into this project, I am committed to it as well. I just don't wanna get caught up on a technicality, which is what my fear is at this juncture.
What's the notice requirement for the ZBA? Would you, wouldn't you have to issue a citation early to get on that September agenda?
Yeah, you couldn't make this-
Wouldn't make, the timing wouldn't want.
It would have to be the actual one, yeah?
Plus, uh, we, we should still make a recommendation, if we go that route, we should make a recommendation to the ZBA from the Planning Board, like we did for the original variance, also with our justification of why we support, uh-
It's a huge thing.
Yeah.
Like, isn't there any way that you can get the drawings to us by the thirteenth?
I, Laura, I, I sincerely believe so, and I hope so. Um, I, my engineer, Matt, has been hammering away at it. We were tearing through it over the weekend. The biggest issue we have is, you know, we're doing the structural and the architectural, which is, from what I understand, not easy or quick. I, I, I don't know enough about the technical end of that. I think he can have it done, but I, I just, I'm hedging my bets, because I, I'm just concerned that, you know, we're gonna run into an issue, but I truly, I, I believe he will be able to have it done. Um, you know, the only thing I can do is say, you know, I'll call him tomorrow morning and explain it, and really, really, really put the pressure on him that he knows it has to be in. Um, I, I, just because this part is something that I, I don't have any physical control over, I'm just trying to be cautious.
Well, you know, give it the best effort, and, uh, Laura will clock this with the town attorney and, and have a contingency plan in place from, you know, what steps would be required, but it sounds like, uh, what would be required if you don't, if you're not able to produce would be, uh, citation, uh, that you're in violation of the previous approvals, and then we'll have to take it from there.
Okay. Um, you know, Laura, I know you're off this week. Um, I'll get with Clark tomorrow as soon as I've spoken to, uh, to Matt, just to, you know, let him know and, um, make sure that we're doing everything we can. I think we'll make it. Um, obviously, if, if we don't, then, uh, we'll, we'll be to that other end of it, but hopefully, we will be able to get it in and, and not have it go to the citation move.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other com-
I'd have more information tonight.
Any other comments or questions from the board, from the subject?
Not on my end.
Okay. All right. See if we can get there, make it easier for everybody. Obviously, thank you very much.
Look at Adam in the movie. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. All right, uh, let's see, next is, um, where are we? Next is thirteen-fifty-six Balltown Road. This is a new application, this is the site plan approval, uh, for ten town homes, town home buildings. And we have Mr. Caponera, uh, that I believe is gonna kick it off for the, uh, for the applicant, and tell us about the project.
Right away, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
And, Victor, it's gonna be especially hard for the remote people to hear you, so you're really gonna have to speak into that microphone on the podium there.
Is that, is that movable, Laura? Is that on long enough cord to get him more-
You can pull it, like, out and carry it around with you.
Yeah, it's on, it's on Velcro there.
Just pull it really hard.
Well, thank you for, uh, allowing us to come in front of this board. The last time I was here was with the Rivers Ledge project, as some of you may recall, maybe all of you. And I wanna thank Laura for your help in getting us to the finish line a few months ago, when we were trying to get the final funding done. Regarding this project, um, I've been asked to represent the owner of the property, which is lands of Niskuna B, RB Holding Company LLC. Members of that LLC are with us, Tim and Robert Miller, they're, uh, in the audience, Dave Engels, um, and Wendy Holsberger, who's a traffic engineer. So, as I'm sure most of you recall, four years ago, approximately, the owner submitted a proposal to this board, uh, that was quite robust. Uh, it asked for rezoning of the property, it asked for, uh, the consideration of, um, fifty apartments, six thousand square feet of, uh, small shop, conserver, con- commercial space, and, uh, it set forth in the narrative that I put together. The, my client came up with this concept based upon their interpretation of what this town's comprehensive plan is. Obviously, the board had, I believe, two meetings, uh, there was discussion, and there was neighborhood input, and once all of that was digested, the owners of the property wrote a letter to you, Mr. Chairman, and withdrew the application. That was back in October of two thousand and seventeen, so nearly four years ago. Since that time, um, the property owner reviewed all the transcripts, comments. In fact, as I believe, uh, my facts are correct, it actually reached out and had discussion with the neighbors that had comments relative to the proposal. And they found that the concerns that were brought up, uh, basically dealt with traffic, burden on school, uh, rental versus homeownership, potential decline in property values, uh, and last but not least, the introduction of a commercial component to this project. So, what my client did is took all that in consideration. Uh, we've studied this property, and as you look at the phone board that was put together by Mr. Engels, you can see the proposal, the ten town home buildings. Um, to the north is WRGB, you can obviously see that. To the south is the, uh, pharmacy. Uh, directly to the east is Van Antwerp Apartments, uh, and obviously, it shows the proposed curb cuts, uh, as being two on this project. Now, we already know that there's some homes along Balltown, and I believe there's some homes, I was just over there on Van Antwerp, that would obviously do away with those curb cuts, uh, bringing it to two. And there's another thing that we discussed today, is that this is proposed to be all private, the roads, meaning that there wouldn't be a dedication of the roads to the town. The obvious imp- part of that is that, that the town wouldn't have to maintain the prop of the roads, uh, winter, summer. Uh, and upon information and belief, I believe that this is the only, uh, property that's, that's in the Town Center Overlay District that's still R-two zoning district. Um, so, we know that the property is surrounded by CN zoning, and I just talked about to the north, WRGB, CN to the south, CVS Pharmacy, R-three to the east, Van Antwerp, and in addition, on page twelve, your town's master plan states that the subject property should remain R-two. So, the property owner eliminated any concept that included commercial, eliminated any concept that included rental. Uh, it considered the curb cuts that are presently there and proposed curb cuts, which you see, which is two. As I just mentioned, it's proposed to be private road, obviously, there'd be an HOA involved with this that would maintain it. It considered traffic, it considered the potential burden on school system, it considered property values, it considered existing housing currently for sale, and how long it's been on the market, which is why they developed this plan with the townhomes. So, we propose to subdivide this property, uh, into twenty single-family townhomes on twenty separate lots with the two curb cuts that are shown on the site plan. So, an alternative plan, uh, that we considered was seventeen single-family homes. We believe that the single-family homes are, or the, the townhome concept is a better option for the following reasons. Single-family townhomes address an immediate market need and diversifies the available housing stock in Niskuna. Single-family townhomes allow for more efficient use of the land, thus enabling a dedication of approximately twenty-three percent of the parcel to Forever Wild. Single-family townhomes reduce curb cuts along Ball, Balltown Road and Van Antwerp from eight to two. Single-family townhomes produce less traffic during both AM and PM peak hours, as shown on a letter we submitted from VHB Engineering, signed by Wendy, who's with us. And we studied the historical granting of variances by the zoning board of this town, and in two thousand and ten, the ZBA determined that the CVS Pharmacy, this just to the south here, uh, would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. here, uh, would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And in 1994, the ZBA granted a request for variances, including use variances, which allowed for the construction of 12 townhomes just to the north and to the west of this property at 1437 Balltown, across from the subject property, Kitty Corner. And the ZBA determined that there were no significant impacts associated with the project, which was approved by this board. The proposal we are submitting, in our opinion, would likely not produce a significant number of school-aged children, would not require utility extensions. The elevations for the townhomes I've spread out in front of you, we feel is in keeping with the neighborhood design and the neighborhood aesthetics. I did not design these elevations, but they were done by a professional design architect. We believe the proposal would be in character with the neighborhood, would be environmentally sound, and we'd preserve as much of the existing mature trees on the property as we possibly can. So our master plan, or the town's master plan discusses diversity of housing. It discusses, uh, the fact that Niskuna is mostly single-family. We believe the proposed single-family townhome would be a great transitional use from the adjacent CVS Pharmacy to the south, the Van Antwerp Village Apartments just to the northwest. Uh, we feel that this proposal would address market need and introduce a diversity of housing that's consistent with the vision set forth in the town's comprehensive plan. And that's our vision of what we'd like to do with this property after having come before this board four years before with a, what I consider to be a far more robust, robust project. This is substantially different, substantially smaller, and we feel it incorporates the comments and concerns that were raised by this board and others in the neighborhood. That's, believe it or not, all I have to say for now.
Okay. Thank you. Was anybody else going to speak tonight?
Uh, I didn't ask them to talk, but I asked them if they could come, should the board have any questions relative to our traffic, uh, comments that were made by Wendy, uh, the Millers or Mr. Ingles.
Um, one of the questions that comes to my mind is that, you know, uh, I know that the team engaged the neighborhood and I assume that they were engaged, you know, uh, for this latest proposal. Could somebody give us some feedback, uh, what you heard at that or how that went?
Anyone want to talk about that?
Thank, good evening. My name is Tim Miller. Again, my brother Bob is with us as well. We did after the, after we withdrew the application four years ago, we did exactly what Vic stated and as we reviewed all the transcripts, reviewed the transcripts of the planning board meetings and we identified not only what was said, but who said it. And we amongst ourselves created a focus group internally and we reached out to some of the neighbors to see if they'd be willing to talk with us and work with us and share their ideas with us. And we were fortunate enough to, to do that with several members of the community and it was very, it was, it was a great experience for us because we got to talk with people that were thoughtful and honest and shared with us what they liked and what they didn't like. And we did our best to incorporate their concerns through various iterations of this concept and remain willing to listen to any concerns that are raised from the public and do our best to address those needs as they arise going forward. But it was a fruitful experience for us.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. Um, I guess if we could open it for, you know, questions from the board, you know, either here or those online, we could do that. Um, I mean, this-
On, on the traffic, you know, in the context of the study they provided, do we have our own information about what that is relative to the amount of cars coming through there at the same time?
You mean what the carrying capacity of Balltown Road is or something?
Well, you know, it talks about, you know, there being 10 trips peak morning hour, 14 trips peak evening hour. And how does that compare to what the number of cars coming through Balltown Road at that time?
It has to be a drop in the bucket.
Yeah.
That's, that's, well, that's my, that's my guess, but that's, that's what I'm asking.
It's definitely a drop in the bucket, Mo.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wendy Holsberger, VHB, I can look up that number, the Balltown traffic, but again, the, the amount of this traffic, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with Balltown Road. It is low and don't forget, when you're looking at that 10 trips, it's, you know, in the morning, it's two entering and two exit, and eight exiting. So you take those two trips and they're going to be, you know, over one hour period, you know, they're not all, they're going to be coming various directions. The same thing with the eight trips in the, in the afternoon entering, you know, obviously Balltown is the, the busier road compared to Van Antwerp. So you could, even if you assume the higher percent are on Balltown, if that's six over an hour, some coming from the north, some coming from the south, there it's, you know, it ends up being a couple trips, you know, once you distribute that, that out, it's already really low and then you distribute it further and then it just continues to minimize the impacts.
Right. But I mean, and I, I agree that probably when you put out the number, the number is probably up a percent.
A small, like one percent.
However, I do think for you, if you're the one who's going through that traffic at that time, and you're the one who's like maybe waiting now through two lights instead of one light or three lights instead of two lights, you will find that to be a significant, it, it will perceive to be significant. But it's just, those are the comments that you've, we've heard before on the, we recognize and appreciate that this is a far more scaled back project than what it is before. You heard the comments earlier about the concern about potentially, you know, people getting frustrated and going on to alternative, going on to alternative, um, locations. And I guess my, I guess, what's your, what's your response to that?
Right. So just this, this magnitude of traffic, you know, you're, when you're talking about impacting like cycles of a signal, just to give you an idea, the Department of Transportation and the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they're, the industry guidelines that we follow when we're scoping out projects is the thresholds of impact. They kind of put at 100 trips, like at an intersection approach, not even like 100 trips generated by a site. So they say that, you know, and obviously there's differentials for different roads where it could be a little bit less or more, but if you're, we're, they're saying like you start looking at intersections for impact when you start hitting 100 vehicles hitting an intersection approach. So 100 vehicles more on the northbound Balltown Road approach is kind of what that guideline is. So if we're talking about eight trips and exiting in the morning, some going north, some going south, like we're, we're a couple of trips, we're like three or four trips, that guideline, kind of the industry guideline is 100. So that just kind of gives you a magnitude of where DOT kind of says, this is what, you should really analyze this in detail. Obviously, we still, you know, where the, the driveways are, we still need to, you know, look at those, where they are and coordinate with the Department of Transportation on those driveways, but the Department of Transportation, you know, isn't going to have us go up and look at Knott Street because of, uh, four trips in an hour.
Yeah. Do we also have any accident data on that, the people making the turn into CVS or the, I can't remember the name of the street across from CVS? Not Van Antwerp.
Oh, the other one.
The other one, the little, the little one, I think. It's not Barcelona, it's just before Barcelona, by the old, near the old town hall. And again, I got, but truly my question is, is that, that also was on top of the traffic, you also tend to have back blockages in traffic when people are making left turns from the opposite lanes. And again, I'm just, I, I'm not really trying to yank it, I'm really, it's just kind of talking through.
Right.
Because I do think that this traffic aspect, even if it's, even if it's microscopic, which is kind of what you're saying, and I'm kind of, I think I sort of agree with it, but I, you're talking about a very busy area for certain times of the day that is going to add additional volume for an area that does have some issues from time to time. So that's, but again, that's my own interpretive thought as opposed to what our objective data is. And that's really what I'm asking in terms of like the data about car crashes, is that, and is that, is that kind of adding this additional turnover here for people exiting out of there? Is that going to create any pressure on the intersection and increase the likelihood of accidents?
I mean, I can tell you based on my experience that this level of traffic, you know, doesn't typically show like a pattern increase in crashes. I have not studied the crashes at this location, but if you're talking about crashes, turning in, if there's crashes at CVS, you know, that's, you know, the, where this driveway is and the magnitude we're talking about of like a handful that may be taking a left in during those peaks or left out during the peaks.
Yeah.
They're kind of two different things. You're looking, you know, like a CVS, it's not, they're not in the same place. So what's happening at CVS, I understand what you're, you're pointing out, but that's really not going to be an impact of this driveway per se.
And how does that necessarily compare as well to like people exiting out of WRGB or, you know, the Ace Hardware on, I guess they're not supposed to be going out Ace Hardware that way, but you know, is, how does that, you know, how does that number compare there? Is it a similar microscopic number?
Mo, one thing I just want to kind of, you know, following your logic, I just want to interject and make sure we keep in perspective when we're talking about the trips to this proposed development. This is a now completely residential development.
Right.
So keep in mind, if people are homeowners residing here permanently, they will find the safest, logic would dictate that they'll find the safest path and the path of least resistance. So if they are trying to travel southbound on Balltown Road and they are safe drivers, I believe they will use the opportunity to travel along to Van Antwerp and connect with that light heading southbound to take a safe left-hand turn onto Balltown Road.
There are times of the day when that area gets backed up as well too. Not as often as Balltown Road does.
It does. It is. Yeah.
And so-
What you have to keep in mind, if it's, if you're trying to compare trips out of this development to trips out of the CVS or Hatchet Hardware, keep in mind those might be more unique trips as opposed to people who travel the same planned route every day.
No, I guess what I'm working backwards from though is the, any danger associated with people making a left-hand turn out of those other businesses when you have this other area that backs up at the same time and, and just whether in any way, shape or form, this will add, if the level of that danger is high, I don't think it is, but I do think that there is some perception that it's going to add on to some of the hassle that you get not for most of the day, but for pockets of the day.
Well, I would respond to that by stating that I believe we can't, we can't really amplify that perception, understanding that this travel impact is negligible.
That is my, that is my guess going in to this, but again, I wanted to flesh this out a little bit more because I know that there have been some concerns raised about this, even in its more scaled back forms.
It's considerably scaled back and I think if we're talking about the merits of this proposal, um, it's very much in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I think having these elevations, um, paints a very good picture, picture's worth a thousand words. You know, if I'm looking at, at, um, I think it's that elevation right there as I'm traveling Balltown Road. Certainly I like the look of that better than whatever's there now. And I think you couldn't say that that's anything but residential. Um, so I think it, I think it would be a, a very, a very positive development. And I also like that it's promoting some more pedestrian-friendly traffic to and from the CVS location and all along Balltown Road, hopefully from CVS all the way to Hatchet Hardware. Uh, those are just two-
All the way to the co-op.
Those are just two merits that I see at face value here.
Yeah. The thing I like about also is that, you know, obviously the driveways are not on Balltown or on Van Antwerp. Driveways are on the rear, if I understand this correctly. Uh, and, uh, so from the streetscape of either road, as Mr. McPartland stated, you know, have nice residential character and there won't be all these driveways, which could, you know, cause traffic problems, everybody pulling in and out of driveways. Cause there's only two, you know, two points of ingress egress, you know, being Balltown Road and Van Antwerp. So I do like that and I, I agree, Mr. McPartland, uh, for the residences themselves with this proposal, um, they'll find a path of least resistance, whether that's coming out on Van Antwerp and to go, to go south, so you don't have to cut across traffic and picking up that light, or whether it's going Van Antwerp, uh, to the, I guess would be more to the northeast. There's plenty of opportunities for the residences to, to be able to, um, ingress or egress this site safely, the way it's laid out. Um,
I have a couple of questions along the lines of traffic when you're done, Chairman.
Go, go right ahead.
So just to confirm for the public and for the board, the, the traffic measurements you have are incremental to the existing expected traffic from residences that are currently there?
No.
So we have to reduce what, if those single-family homes were to remain single-family homes, right now they're not occupied, that would be even less significant, you know? So the, this, the topic of volume is insignificant, but the topic of adding residences to Niskuna is very significant, especially to me. I think we've added quite a few over the past 10 years that I've been on the board. And as new, new projects come in, I'm going to be, uh, I can just personally say I'm going to be pretty critical as to which ones we approve and which ones we don't approve. I will say, and I want to, you know, commend, um, what Mr. Darpeno is saying, if I recall, this was apartments, this was commercial. Um, the feedback that was given, I think I sat through some of the discussions with, with the brothers and, um, this was spot on with all the feedback that a lot of the residences, the residential community folks came and stepped forward to speak about and the complaints that they had. Um, this is all, these are all deeded townhouses. So these are for sale, not rental, right? Um, and we do have a deficit of that type of housing in Niskuna. We've all asked for more of that over the past 10 years I've been here. I just couldn't, I just want to echo that this is pretty darn close to, oh, that's much louder. Thank you. Um, to what we were hoping we could possibly get to up to, to improve the fact that people were backing out of their driveways onto Balltown Road from a residential home. Now they're going to be able to literally go out facing forward on either side of the street, really enhancing the safety of that whole area. And just to confirm, you're also reducing those curb cuts to two, a total of two?
Right. So there's no direct drive, no direct residential driveways.
Got it.
To or from Balltown or Van Antwerp.
Thanks for confirming those things. Okay.
Wendy, I have a question for your report. I, I think I, I understand why, but maybe you could articulate for the board.
A nasty look from that there.
Could you just articulate for the board? There's a, there's a net difference between 17 homes and 20 homes is a decrease in traffic from fewer units rather than greater units? Could you explain your methodology?
Right. So the, the data we get is from the Institute of Transportation Engineers who does studies of, you know, developments and, you know, all over, um, the, all over the country. So, single-family homes do generate a higher, higher number of trips than say a townhome. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, just if you're looking at a single-family home development, there tend, there would tend to be more homes that would have more vehicles or larger families than when you're in either like an apartment or a townhome development. They do have a lower trip generation rate and it just tends to be the balancing out of, of having, you know, smaller families or, um, in those homes that have less vehicles that then end up generating the, a little bit less trip, trip rates. That's why there's a, a differential when we compared if the site was built with 17, 17 single-family homes versus the 20 townhomes. And they're both still, you know, very low trend generators, but there is, there is a difference in a positive traffic from, from the townhomes versus the single-family.
And how many homes are on the property now that obviously are unoccupied? Do you, do you call?
I don't know.
Mr. Miller?
Five.
Five, five homes? Thank you.
Yeah, we didn't, you had asked that. We, we didn't do like a, you know, take out the five. So that, that 10 is, you know, all new, all just associated with the-
This project.
Yeah. So we didn't take out, you know, the five, which would have made that 10 even less if you look at what the site was previously generating when those homes were all occupied.
I really want to stress the importance of what you just said there, right? This is, this is 10 townhouses that are going to have less coming and going, those cars potentially, right? There's a little more control of who might buy those and- potentially, right? There's a little more control of who might buy those and those driveways are going to be gone and there's no backing in and there could be three or four cars with a single-family home, right?
Yes.
So that's pretty significant.
Yeah. With the five homes, there was five curb cuts on Balltown and now there's going to be one curb cut on Balltown to support this site.
Right. And the Van Antwerp, which gives the option. So it gives the, you know.
Yeah. I'm just saying versus, you know, the past situation over there versus the past. It was just the five driveways, I believe on Balltown, right?
Correct.
Yep. And there's some positives for the application. One question, if it's for Laura or Mr. Capenera, we need any area variances? I know this is the first time we've seen this, so we're going to need to take a look at how it complies with the zoning.
The answer is yes. And so when touching upon some of the comments, it's funny with masks, you don't even know who the heck's talking. I'm watching, I'm saying, who's talking now? Yeah, I know. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm talking now anyway. But anyway, in order to do this and have separate lot ownerships, separate homes where people own rather than rent, which was one of the comments or probably a lot of the commentary that was made four years ago, we'd have to create separate lots. So the town has a requirement for a minimum side yard setback. So if you look at this proposal, we don't meet the side yard setback. We, it's called a zero lot line. So when the 10 townhomes, each townhome is conjoined into two, sorry, into two, so you'd need an area variance for that. That's what we'd need.
Okay.
Okay? It's not a use variance, it's an area variance. And there's a huge, huge difference between the two. Cause when my clients came and consulted with me, we talked about different options. One of the options was consideration of use variance and I quickly said, no. I said, if we're going to do this, we're going to ask for.
Area.
An area variance, which is basically the courts of the state of New York, the third department, which I've been in front of a few times on these very issues. It's a balancing act, benefit to the applicant versus detriment to the surrounding properties. That's what an area variance is. And so long answer to your short question, area variances.
And that would be a total of 10 area variances, right?
Yes, on the side yards.
Yep. One for each set of townhomes, right?
There's a minimum requirement for each lot. I've got all of the figures, but I'm not, I don't want to bore you with the details.
Oh, you know, this is a new application and obviously the planning office, building department has not an opportunity to review in detail, but that'll be the first thing that'll come out of it, I assume, is any denials that it doesn't meet the zoning code.
Yeah, we would make a chart of the area variances required for each lot. Cause things also, it's frontage, total lot square footage and side yard setback.
Right. So, you know, this board obviously will need to have the details on those and then, you know, figure out where we stand and then make the recommendation to the zoning board of appeals because, you know, that's where the buck's going to stop and whether the project goes forward, right?
Right. Right. I can share that with Laura and so you can either say, yeah, you're right Victor, you need X, Y, and Z or no. But either way, I, I know what we need.
Yeah. Because, you know, that, you know, obviously when it goes ZBA, you know, if they approve the variances, okay, we go forward and well, you go forward. If they don't, you know, you're back to what use is the property, either, you know, what use variance or constructing 17 single-family homes or doing nothing.
Yeah. Yeah. Just to be clear, this proposal that's in front of the board is allow, you know, it's allowable use.
Yep. Understand.
So.
Yep.
Now, would an average density development be appropriate here? I know that would reduce the number of units that the applicants could seek.
Yeah, the average density development would also need like waivers because the, the, the total acreage of this parcel is too small for an average.
Yeah, we need, I think, 10 acres for standard average density development.
Yeah, I think this is 3.4.
How many acres is this, Dave?
5.3.
5.3 acres.
Yep, 5.3, yep.
Right. And theoretically, the 17 houses would require, everyone would have, not everyone would have certain curb cuts, but probably potentially more would have curb cuts.
Yes.
Yeah, they have a plan for their 17 houses. I don't think it was submitted, but I've seen it.
It's many more curb cuts.
Yeah.
It's mostly on Balltown. Clearly, what I've seen, and I've done this a few years, from where it was four years ago to now, this is light years.
Agreed.
A light years from where we, where they were before, in, in a positive, I'm saying. So.
And Laura, in terms of the path, in terms of the path, all that's required is the area variance to get to the 20. Is there any other, to the best of your knowledge, is there any other relief that would be required?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think there's a package for each lot because it's R2 and the lots seem to range around 6,000 and they would normally need 9,000. And then the frontage is just a little bit smaller than the R2. So it's sort of like a package of area variances per lot. I think they're all probably going to end up being about the same. Couple of them are a little bit bigger.
Correct.
Yeah. So site plan review, or sorry, subdivision review. So this is sketch plan. So you guys would be weighing kind of the, just, it's almost an average density development to Patrick's point, because they actually do have a sketch of the 17 single-family homes that you could look at to get a sense of whether you would want to see what the outright permitted use was without area variances, but the use isn't the issue, it's just the square footage of the lots.
Yeah. And I think Laura, we had a similar situation before, we're, process. Do we approve the sketch plan and recommend the area variances if we take, decide to take that route? Or do we just stick with the area variances first?
No, we've, we've said, okay, we're okay with the sketch plan and then we do our recommendations to the zoning board.
Because one of the options, again, looking at this in detail would be, again, to look at how you would minimize the variances. So there is open space, you know, whether you, whether you have the opportunity to get into that to, to minimize the variances, something has to be considered also. As, you know, the zoning board of appeals would take that into consideration, I guess. Or, or you guys, you know, depending on the layout of the site, whether or not there's an opportunity to add, if one of the, if one of the area variances are, are lot size, is there an opportunity to increase the lot size to minimize that by utilizing some of the open space?
I get it.
And it may not be, and it may not be desirable, but that's just, but we have to recognize that because maybe it wouldn't work on all the sites, but maybe it works on a couple of them, you know? And is that what the board wants? I'm not saying, not saying that's what I want. I'm saying that's decisions that we have to make, you know?
There, there's a number of criteria that, that your code, your building code has, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, width, depth, area, maximum lot coverage.
Square foot, yep, square footage.
Yep. We're, we're in pretty good shape. I mean, with the exception of the side yard setbacks, which are the most obvious, when you look at the numbers, you say, wow, it's pretty, pretty close.
Yeah. So Laura, what, so I guess one thing would be helpful, and I assume this is the route we would take, we would, even before we do that, we'd have a list of what those are. So we'd understand those, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So first thing we'd do would be to analyze it and get an agreement that of all the area variances are required. So we just, we understand where we're going, even before we.
100%.
Even before we say sketch plan, so the board can understand that, right? And then we could say, all right, we know what they are, we want to go with it and then we'll go to sketch plan.
We just feel that from a development standpoint, this project is best for this site, based upon everything that I looked at. And I studied all of the comments that were made by not only this board, but, but the, you know, the public when they spoke. I just felt that this was the best possible scenario for this location. It's a very interesting site in terms of where it is, Van Antwerp, Balltown, and then you got these highly commercial uses that Mr. Uster mentioned. I mean, you've got CVS Pharmacy. I mean, there's a lot of traffic that's coming in and out of there. So anyway, it's, I, I hear what you're saying. And Laura, I can, I can send you this. So you can look at it and just compare it and say, yep, you're right, or no, we think this. Either way, before you guys, you know.
Yep. Summary of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Variances and get an agreement between the town and the applicant and everybody's in agreement and then we'll evaluate.
Yes.
Could I add, Mr. Miller spoke earlier tonight about talking to stakeholders. To the extent you have materials that you can document to the board at the appropriate time, at a full presentation, I think that'd be very helpful to describe in whatever detail you can provide us with whom, when, give us a little context. I think that's really meaningful. Any color and detail you can offer would be helpful.
Okay. So this is the kickoff time. Is there anything else that you guys would like to add or your team would like to add?
No, I'm, I'm good unless.
Is there any?
Mr. Engels loves to sit behind me and just.
Yeah. He's got, he's hiding behind you in the mask. We don't even know he's there.
No.
I just have, I do have one question to ask. It may be clear in the description, but as we look at this, this photo, the townhouse to Van Antwerp to the west looks extremely close to that white structure. Is that white structure not going to be there?
That's a single-family home, the one existing, right?
Well, there's a single-family home and then there's like a garage in the back and then there's another garage or structure to the right of it. That one right there, yep. Is that property line cutting right through those two garages?
Can you tell the answer to that?
Yeah, maybe I want to jump forward.
And once you get the answer, just please speak into the microphone, okay? So summarize.
That white, yeah, that one. Okay, that's the one that you own on Van Antwerp. Yeah.
That's an existing house and it looks like a garage. It would come down.
That's the fifth house, the one driveway in Van Antwerp. Got it. Thank you. Okay.
Good question.
Yeah, it's a good one. So I was mistaken. So it'd be, there was four current driveways on Balltown and one on Van Antwerp then. Okay.
The one on Van Antwerp or two?
One.
One, okay. Yes, correct.
Good. Okay. Thank you. All right. All right. Any other questions from the board or anybody that's online, including Ms. Gold or anybody? No? Okay. Well.
Thank you very much.
A couple of comments. One, the applicant's representative is not recognizing the residential nature of the existing homes across the street on both Balltown and Van Antwerp sides. This is a departure from that because you require the demolition of a number of homes that are existing. And I also noted that the ITE trip generation annual is about to come out with the 11th edition this fall. I suspect because with the pandemic habits have changed and more people are working from home, et cetera. So I don't know that we can put a whole lot of stock in the trip generation estimates. Plus, when you're talking with small numbers, like the difference between 17 single-family homes and 20 townhouses, statistics often don't hold up. So I think we need to be a little cautious and I would like very much to hear from the neighbors.
Okay. And thank you, Ms. Gold. And, and, you know, obviously this is being available on YouTube, either live or, or later on. So, and it's been on the town website. So as the neighbors, they don't know about it, they'll know about it and we welcome any comments that they have and I'm sure the applicant does also. So we look forward to any public input we can, we can obtain. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just anticipating some concerns that may arise from public comment. I think it would be better to have an idea early on of what the limits of clearing would be and any potential impact to the, the streetscape in terms of mature trees.
Fine. That's a good, very good point.
Yeah, thanks. Mr. McPartland. Any other questions or comments?
Will, will there be sidewalks added on Van Antwerp or is, I don't believe there's a sidewalk that continues.
It's an option that could be done, yes. I don't think it's shown there, but the answer.
Does it look like it?
The answer is it's open.
Yep. That'll be part of the site plan. Once we, you know, obviously the variances are granted, we go forward, we'll get into the details of design, you know? And, you know, things like the architectural review board, you know, they take a look at the renderings that you have and obviously the tree council and all, or regular process. It's going to require a curb cut, New York State DOT along Balltown Road. So, you know, right? So states will be involved and notified. Again, that's part of the process and we'll hear what they have to say also.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much for coming and we appreciate you, your time.
Bye-bye.
Yep. And we'll, look forward to continuing on the process. All right. And thank you. All right. And then we'll move on, on the discussion. And next up is Harmon Grove Apartments. Again, this is a new application tonight. And so it's the first time we'll have this discussion and it looks like we have the representative applicant, Mr. Steenberg, with us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Brett Steenberg. I'm here on behalf of Amador Land Development and a proposal for the Harmon Groves Apartments. My apologies, the last few meetings I've been at, the, been able to pull up the plans on the screen. I didn't bring a board this time, thinking that that was going to be the case. But I think you probably have them on your laptop from the agenda packet. So you can see what, can walk you through it. The, this is one of the parcels that went with the Harmon Grove subdivision. This particular parcel is 21 and a half acres in size. It's zoned R3, was always part of the master plan to develop this as apartments. It does back up to the Commerce Park, Van Niskun and Commerce Park on Hillside Avenue, as well as to the, to the south, the solar panels and ultimately Iroquois Village on the other side of the solar panels via Alice Wagner Way. So there are, you know, some, some more intense uses around it and it was, I, I think it was always part of the master plan to develop this as, as an R3 use. The parcel is constrained with several, several utility corridors. As you can see, one on the western border, the northern border and one bisecting the property. And not only to that constraint, it also is constrained with the master plan, Town Collector Roads for Riley Way and Alice Wagner Way. Alice Wagner Way terminates at the end of Iroquois Village at the solar panels, but it's, I think it's still the intent that someday that will eventually meander its way through to Riley Way and ultimately provide as a connector out to Balltown from Hillside Avenue and Riley Way, which connects through the Commerce Park and ultimately out to Hillside Avenue. The applicants have been, you know, looking at this parcel for quite some time. The, the, the main issue with this parcel is access underneath the power lines. I don't know if you're aware, when they built Bergen Place, they had to raise the power lines. That was a significant sum of money to raise the power lines. And when they did, they actually raised it a considerable distance. And I think they're up about 26 feet now. And we're, we're showing our connection across through proposed minor town road. The existing power lines which border the eastern portion of the property, those are only at about 17 feet. We can't cut to go underneath them because we're into wetlands in that area. It's a low area, it's wet. And there, there is a significant cost. So what we've, and I know we talked with Laura a couple of times over the last few years with various concepts and what we would like to do. The initial concept had a, had connection off of Bergen. And they're actually, when they did Harmon Grove, they actually left a stub street there to the parcel. But the stub street, when they did it, didn't align with Epsom. The park aligned with Epsom. And meeting with the town, there, it worked out that it would be best if we make that connection opposite, make a T-intersection with Epsom, which I totally agree with, and relocate the park. So what this proposal does is it proposes access to the site off of Bergen with the relocation of the town park through where the town park was shown on the Harmon Grove subdivision. The town park that we're proposing is approximately three times the size of what that town park was, because we do have some available area, which you show here. And what we're proposing are 138 apartment units. The density of the parcel would allow up to 215 units based on 10 units per acre. There's no way we could get that without variances due to the number of 70-foot setbacks that are required from the, from the town roads and the town roads that are required to come through the site, as well as the constraints between wetlands and, and utility corridors. But we are proposing 138 units. And I know there have been a couple of other proposals over the years before I became involved. When I looked at this, we looked at it from a topographic standpoint and the topography on the site slopes from east to west going up. If you're looking from the end of Riley Way, it actually goes up a considerable grade to the, to the Commerce Park. So it's proposed to, that's, that's the reason the buildings are oriented the way they are and we're not creating courtyards or. and we're not creating courtyards or, you know, buildings facing opposite each other with parking in between because you run into real issues with trying to make the grades work without clearing everything and filling and cutting everything. We're trying to, you know, maintain as much, minimize as much land disturbance as possible with, in the process. And the buildings that, I hate talking with these masks, the buildings that we're proposing are similar to the Iroquois Village buildings and, in a sense that they have the same concept, the architect, that the, that the developers have chosen is the same, same architect who did Iroquois Village. However, we're not going to be pursuing variances for building height like they did. We're going to cut it down from three stories to two-story buildings on the front side with the garage access in the rear so that we can maintain the 35-foot required building setback. We don't want to pursue any variances for this parcel and I think we've, we've prepared a sketch plan which should meet all of the codes and requirements in the R3 zone. So if you're looking at the site coming in, we're proposing to come in opposite Epsom off of Bergen Way and then an entrance to that circle which goes to the bottom or the rear of the three units, the three buildings, three 16-unit buildings. Each one of those buildings will have a parking garage underneath it with 18 parking spaces so we don't have those accessory parking buildings around the site. So all parking is contained within the building for at least one unit. And the, the, each of the, the buildings will have elevators that service all the floors for those 16, for those three 16-unit buildings. And then moving up, what we're proposing is Riley Way. Again, you'll have similar units where the downhill side, which is the eastern side of the building, will have garage access, three floors because you'll have that garage on the rear and then the main floor access on the front facing westward. And for three units, the, three building, three 16-unit buildings there and then we did, were able to fit in one 10-unit building near the end of that due to the wetlands and the configuration of the road, we were unable to, to fit the, the standard footprint in there that we're proposing. And then two more buildings as you get up near the, the top. We're proposing that when the ultimate connection, and I know we talked about this, is made to Hillside Avenue, that the developer who develops the property to the west would ultimately make that Riley Way connection through with the major commercial road. We're proposing the major commercial road section down through to the terminus and then a minor commercial road section as you come out to Bergen, Bergen Place. Another reason we're proposing that as minor is because Bergen Place meets the minor criteria for, for the pavement width and, and size. We are all, also are proposing a stub street should Alice Wagner Way ever get continued through. Again, that is, that is the actual location, which is shown on the master plan for that connection as it comes down through. Again, this is, this is sketch, we wanted to get it before you, kind of get your initial thoughts, so I can go back to the, to the applicant with, with what the, what this board is looking for. And we're proposing again, something that is upright with the R3 zone with no variances.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, one thing that would help me, and I know we've seen this before, Laura, like the 5,000-foot view where you can see, you know, this proposal along with the potential future connections out to, you know, in the Commerce Park, so we can actually see the big picture. I know there was things that we've seen in the past that the town has or somebody else produced, but that would be very helpful to understand that because obviously, you know, from our previous discussion regarding the 10 townhomes, the 20 units on Balltown Road, you know, this proposal, you know, obviously has 138 units and they all exit onto Balltown Road until those future connections are made, you know? And so, you know, we'd be looking at, you know, those numbers also, you know, the same numbers that were presented earlier from the Highway Engineering Handbook, what this means to, to Balltown Road. And of course, the state, that would be, the state would probably, you know, obviously have to get involved in, in those numbers, whether they are significant or not, you know?
Understood, yeah. Amador typically uses VHB and probably have Wendy work on that because she knows the, the traffic better, far better than I.
Yep, and I'm, you know, again, that's, you know, the first things that, you know, came to my mind is just try to understand the big picture because if you're not in control of those properties, you know, what opportunities are out there to make those connections sooner, you know, whether there's agreements or easements, and I don't know if any of that's, you know, possible, but I really need to see the, really need to see the, you know, the 5,000-foot view so we can see if there's any opportunities there to help solve any potential traffic issues that may arise at, you know, this 138 apartment units, you know? Especially if we could somehow get out to Alice Wagner Way and out to Hillside because that, you know, brings, you know, it opens, you know, travel disconnected here down the Aqueduct Road.
Yeah.
Or even just avoid going out to Balltown, you know? Traffic, you know, seems to be moving pretty, you know, I go over that way a lot, it moves along pretty quickly.
Yeah.
So it depends on what's the direction you're going when you pull out, right? You know, and what time of day it is. If you're going south at the right time of day, it's no problem, but if you got to cross two lanes of traffic, it's, it's probably tough. But I'll, I'll leave it up to the board. I'm sure there's concerns with traffic. We had concerns with the other, her comments regarding the other proposal, this one obviously was much more intense.
Yeah.
How many bedrooms for?
They would vary between one and two bedrooms, I would figure, or at this point a 50/50 ratio. I don't have the final, the final plans and one thing I didn't know, but when Amador did do the improvements to the Balltown Road North Palm Station for Harmon Grove.
Brett, can you talk louder?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, then move that down, there you go.
Yeah, when Amador did do the improvements to the Balltown Road North Palm Station, they did take this project into consideration when they'd made those improvements for the additional flows.
Yeah, I just could notice you had, it was the, it was 16 apartments with 18 garage spaces, does that mean like there's 16 one-bedroom and two, two-bedroom or?
No, no, I, I would figure probably, probably, I would figure eight one-bedroom and eight two-bedroom in each building. The, the 18 garage spaces, that just happens to be what we can fit and then it meets the code requirement for one covered garage space per unit, per rental unit. And then the additional spaces as necessary on the outside. We do exceed the, the two-per-unit requirement slightly, we end up with 2.1 spaces per dwelling unit.
And then I maybe discussed this before, is, is there one that's just 10, is one of the buildings that is 10 units?
Yes, that is the, the one about halfway up, all the way over to the right and that would have also 10 parking spaces within the building. And that's, that footprint is similar to the big house condominium style layout. We ended up doing very similar thing at Iroquois Village because the setbacks and stuff wouldn't permit the, the standard building, so we ended up coming up with a custom design just so that we could get a few more units into there.
Is there any design at this point, what, what they, what they might look like or is it that just like way, way too early at this?
I wouldn't say it's way too early because this, the, this particular design, again, the, the architect did a very, very similar layout for Iroquois Village. They also did a similar layout on a much grander scale with 32 units per building for senior housing in East Greenbush for Amador. So they, the, the, it's really a very, it's just a matter of scale and, and size. I think, I think we could probably, you know, the next time we come back, have at least some sort of sketch from the architect that you can take a look at that.
Because I can't remember, I mean, I can't really, we're exactly visually, but it was an Amador, we, there was actually something was the one we looked at, we could actually see the houses, that when they did the description of it, you could actually see it from the, from Balltown Road. I don't know, I mean, this might be too, way too far or it's, where it won't be, where it won't be visible from Balltown Road.
I actually believe it will be visible from Balltown.
So it's actually even more important then to have the visual of what that will be for people coming in other directions.
Because of the gradient change.
Was that?
For E1, we had.
Was it, I knew there was something where we, we had the visual for, from, from Balltown Road, there was a, you know, there was a.
It was E1.
Yeah, 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 just to kind of have that factor into whatever we're looking at.
Photoshop what the building would look like as you were driving along Balltown Road and from actually, in E1's case, opposite side of the river because it was so visible when you were driving down Balltown Road.
But I thought, I thought they had, I thought, I thought they did that for, I think it was the, I thought it was the Amador subdivision, was another, yeah, I, I thought there was another one that we were looking at off of Balltown Road where there was a, it was a rendering made of what it would look like coming from.
Possibly their older one, the Schwaber, I don't know, because I don't know that Harmon Grove is actually, the houses are actually visible off Balltown, but I do know the apartments will.
Yeah, you can see some of them, especially down toward the, the backside with the walkouts.
It could have been a different project, I just remember one that we had that where, where that was just something that the developer had put together, had, had their, you know, had their architect put together, just that type of streetscape that we're going to, that the driver would see.
That's certainly a reasonable question, we can work on that.
I guess it's kind of interrelated. Do you know how things are going with the Harmon Grove subdivision now as far as sales and available lots, any?
I, I don't know how many available lots, but I know sales have begun to pick up substantially out there since, since COVID. Actually, they were, they were building to, basically to the end of COVID until they got shut down out there, but I think, actually, that's, I, I keep getting the calls from George to get working on this because obviously.
They're going to mobilize if they can get, keep.
Get this moving.
Yeah, because before they finish out there, yeah.
Exactly.
That's exactly where I was going with this, yeah. And what's the unit count for Harmon Grove, I don't remember. 66? Remembered.
Single family.
Yep. Yeah, I was just over there tonight, took a ride, ride through, you know, there are beautiful homes over there.
Yeah, they do a good job. I've been doing a lot of work with them.
It's a good product, it's good product, I mean. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't want to speak for the board, but, you know, heard from the comments we had earlier, you know, obviously traffic, I mean, at least the first cut, simple, you know, trip generation, similar to what was shown for us for 1356 Balltown Road, you get an idea of what we're looking at and I would, you know, I don't think it's too much asked to see the, you know, again, the 5,000-foot view, just kind of layout, so I can put everything together on one page where all the, the roads are and where the potential connections are. Again, you know, if there are any opportunities at the town or the applicants aware of for expediting any kind of connection somehow with any agreements or joint ventures or whatever you want to call it, that would be, would be ideal, obviously, because I got a feeling when we start talking about the traffic, there may be some concerns about, you know, the addition to Balltown Road, like there always is, right?
Yeah, actually, there, there, my, my concern with the connection actually would be adding additional traffic to Balltown Road that isn't already there, that's.
Oh, you mean bypassing, bypassing the line?
Bypassing the line.
But that's kind of stuff that we'd like to see, right? The, the analysis or whatever, yeah.
I've had that discussion with, with, with the owners because they have actually spoken with neighboring property owners and possible joint ventures and my concern is if we did do, if they did do the joint venture, you may even end up with more of a traffic issue than you would if you don't, but I don't know that to be.
Yeah, I guess, well, you could say avoiding the intersection, but it depends on where you're going because then you wouldn't, you know, where's your destination? Because if you're going north on Balltown, you wouldn't, why would you bother? You'd just go down Hillside and come out to Aqueduct anyway, you know? So I guess it would be if you're working at the GE Training Center somewhere would be probably, or International or SI Group, that would be your opportunity maybe to get there, you know?
I can certainly talk to them about that.
You know?
Ask the question differently?
Yes.
Actually, I was going to ask a slightly different question.
Absolutely.
Are the owners considering a second egress in, in the design they're going to present to us?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Yeah, that's what the preliminary supplemental does and says basically connection by others or future, potential future connections, that's why I ask, yeah.
You know, I think our code requires that you have a secondary connection, so that was going to be one of my comments because you couldn't just stop your road at the end of the parcel line, it wouldn't count as a second connection. You would have to find a way for that road to get somewhere for emergency access purposes.
I, that's something I was actually trying to think about on the way over here as, as I was mulling through the project.
You would have to show offsite how that road connects to a road that emergency vehicles could pass through.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Laura.
Brett, I see that we're disturbing a little, the proposal's to disturb a little bit of wetlands. Are there any wetlands in the direction of either of these proposed future road connections?
In the direction of the future proposed, Alice Wagner Way, yes. That's one of the, what was one of the main obstacles with eventually connecting that road through and then shortly thereafter, solar panels went up and I don't know, I know Laura, you've had discussions, there may still be a way to snake that road through, I don't know. As far as Riley Way, I don't believe there's any wetlands. The wetlands that we're showing to be disturbed as part of this parcel or crossing, had that, that disturbance has already been made in the mitigation, has already been done as part of the original mitigation plan that was, that was done for Harmon Grove and that's another one of the confining aspects, so we're kind of stuck with that crossing as well because that's where our wetland crossing has been shown. So we're, we've got a lot of confines with this project with road layouts and so the buildable areas are kind of defined.
So the, so you, that was included in the Army Corps permit, did, did the road, did some of the site work already get completed?
I would assume, I actually haven't seen it, but typically the Army Corps requires you to make the impact at the time of making the mitigation or, or creating the mitigation area, which they did create down to the western portion of the property, just to the south of Riley Way. There's a wetland mitigation area there. Typically, the Corps would require that and I have not actually seen that permit, but I was told that those, those wetlands have actually been filled and, and impacted.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Just speaking of wetlands, you don't have the 25-foot buffer on these wetlands yet?
Yeah, I haven't shown them, but we did maintain 25 feet for any of the structure.
You did stay out of all of it?
We did stay out of that. I didn't actually show the line because it gets a little cluttered and I wanted to keep.
Yeah, Mo's pointing again to that, your dead end on the road that has to be connected somehow to a second.
Or I didn't know, or I didn't know whether it was like a, you know, a cult, like a turnaround or something, it was just the, the fact that it just ended at the bottom of the map.
Yeah, the one for Riley Way, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to do something there, whether, obviously, we need to have some sort of emergency access, I would think that would be the way out for the emergency access vehicles. I know there's a great differential there, but I don't think it's insurmountable.
So that goes right in, that goes into?
Hillside Commerce Park.
That's, oh, it's Hillside Commerce Park.
Yeah, that's the rear portion of Hillside Commerce Park.
It got renamed Niskuna Commerce Park.
And on the other, well, again, that gets back to, you know, Chairman Walsh's question about kind of where, you know, fits into the larger everything. And the other side of that, what, what's on the other side of that? I mean, I know it's Hillside Commerce Park, is that wooded, is that a road on the other side?
It's, it's actually pretty open and vacant, relatively flat, once you get up on top of the hills. It does, it jumps up relatively quickly, but it's pretty open and vacant and not wooded up there.
It used to be the tank track.
Yeah, the first track, right? Yeah, yeah.
So, and it's, it's, it's interesting because like, and I, I should have thought to bring an overall plan because even having done as much work in Niskuna and living in Niskuna for the last 25 years, seeing this connection in my head between the two gets confusing and seeing where Alice Wagner Way and Riley Way and they all tie in together, it does get confusing and wasn't until, till Ergles, I think, pulled out a map years ago when I first started working on Iroquois Village, that's, that all of it started to make sense and I know the town has that map.
Yeah, like I said, I've seen it, but you need to be refreshed on it personally, you know? It's, it's helpful to understand the big picture when you step back.
And I agree and, you know, like I said, we do have an issue with where the solar panels are, I don't believe we can exit that way. I would like to be able to get out to Alice Wagner Way, I'd love for Alice Wagner Way to connect. One of my other clients actually spent a lot of money designing and building a road to the town spec standards with large setbacks and a lot of, a lot of difficulty to actually develop that site to get that road in and it would be a shame if that road.
And to have it available for future, right?
Yeah.
All right, I mean, this is a site plan, this is a kickoff tonight, I think we need to see some more information and some preliminary numbers just to, so we can wrap our, our heads around this, unless I'm missing something. And comments from the board? I mean, this is an obviously challenging project.
Yes.
And I'm sure you're aware of that. Especially with, you know, this is the first time we heard about it and, you know, I'm sure the public, I mean, I know some of the information that we had so far to date was posted on the town website, but there's, it's quite a bit to embrace there, I guess we'd be aware. So I think we need at least another working session just with some more information, you know, again, traffic and the 5,000-foot view or whatever you want to call it. Is there something else that the board members can think? Is there something else that the board members can think of that I'm missing at this point in time?
Oh, I think you said you were going to at least try to show what the buildings look like.
Yeah, we're going to see what we can do about getting at least some conceptual building innovations for you.
Yeah, and if the future connection is truly in the future and nothing that can be happened there, you know, the emergency.
We got to figure out.
You know, what's the proposal or thoughts there or options, I guess, would be important. Because those are our key, all key items. You know, as far as zoning, you know, obviously it's appropriate. It's, you know, it's a difficult site. I know that, I remember, I can't remember which, who took on the effort? Was that Amador to raise the power lines?
Amador took on the effort to raise the power lines.
Yeah, I remember that was a challenge.
It was a challenge and an expense that was something they hadn't anticipated. And so it's something we've actually been spending a lot of time looking at to figure out what the best way to get into this site is. And the, the power lines where Riley Way is shown to cross are only about 17 feet off the ground and they're pretty high voltage. So they need to probably be another 10 foot up in order to, to put a road underneath it.
And the proposal for the, the park, is that impacted by the power lines also from a, you know, you know, there's always a concern, you know, electromagnetic radiation, so on and so forth. Is it, is a park?
The, the lines are pretty well centered within that, within that easement. I don't, I, I don't have enough information, you know, what the electromagnetic pulse would be from those lines.
Yeah.
But it is, it's actually approximately the same distance from what the original town park was as part of Harmon Grove. Which was much smaller, actually. This actually is, is quite a bit more area and space.
Questions from the board? I think we've got a lot to take in here again.
And to the extent you can, to the extent your site plan, I was trying to track your description vis.
Yes.
Relative to a Google Earth map, I'm just trying to track it. To the extent you can place it in some, you know, simple graphic with Google Earth relative to the other properties around it. And see its orientation, because it's just difficult for me to follow.
Absolutely.
That can be helpful.
I should have thought of that before I came in, and we'll certainly have that at the next meeting. You know, Google Earth showing, showing, well, we can have a couple with.
Yeah.
Showing Hillside Avenue and Balltown Road connection where Riley Way is. Show you the, the town's master plan for those Riley Way and Alice Wagner Way.
Yeah, with a solar array, how that impacts them.
How that impacts. I don't know if that's on Google Earth yet, but you'll be able to see, you know, Iroquois Village, I do know that is on Google Earth now. So you'll be able to kind of see how things align. And we'll, we can go from there.
That would be real helpful.
Give you a little bit better overview.
Okay. Any questions at this point in time from the board? How about for anybody online? Any comments? Ms. Gold, anything?
No, other than I'm looking for bona fide second access.
Okay. That's something we'll have answered before we come back before the part.
Okay. And we'll call it a work in progress tonight. And now thank you for the introduction tonight and everything.
Sounds good. Thank you very time tonight and look forward to seeing you again.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. That's it for discussion items tonight. We'll move on to planning department reports. Any updates, Laura?
Clark and I removed both the church that we had looked at last, last meeting and River's Ledge, because we also didn't get anything new from them. But we did like Friday at 4:00 PM get a drawing for River's Ledge, which obviously that's too late for us to get it on the meeting, but we'll circulate, circulate it to you guys anyway, and so that we can take a look at that for next meeting. I do think that they're also working on phase two of River's Ledge, because I think they feel like phase one is becoming fairly successful, considering they've already signed contracts for like 30 units, which is like more than two of their buildings. But, um, yeah, so we'll have that at the next meeting. And I think that, did you have anything you wanted to add, Clark?
Just the other project with Trinity Baptist Church, they're continuing to work on an update. So I would expect to see them back at the next planning board meeting. And just as a reminder, Tommy Nietzsche would like to. Next week.
Yeah, sorry, just in case the feedback wasn't working, the Broken Inn has an idea for like outside seating that he wanted to share with the planning board.
So that's moving forward, Laura?
Yeah, he like, he had, Clark had reached out to him and touched base with him about what his timeline was. And he definitely said he had a setback. We don't know what it was, but he does seem to have reinvigorated being over there and is now working on it again.
Where were the outdoor seating?
He's shown the proposal, the Clifton Park side.
Has he seen the, any of the renderings from that focus group, the county's?
He was, he participated in them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that they would, it would kind of fit in with what the concept was there?
It, it would fit in. It's not the same, but like, it's certainly something that, you know, he can show you guys and you have, you can take a look at and consider.
Mr. McFarlane, were you, what, the renderings or the focus group was that on, were you referring to Balltown or not street? Or the Clifton Park intersection?
There, so there was a concept floated out there. I don't know where it ended up, but I know it required town funding to create more of a dedicated parking lot.
Yeah, realignment potential.
And realign the intersection with Clifton Park and.
Yeah, Crescent.
Crescent. So what was, what's the, is there an update on that? Do we have a decision with the town's leading?
Well, so, I mean, what the town was doing with that, because they hired a consultant to take all those comments into account, come up with concepts, then we went to the public hearing and took all those comments back. Is we were going to summarize the comments and the, and engineer was going to put all of them that are possible to put into the drawing into the drawing. And then that would be our final drawing. But the town doesn't have funding for it. So it was just going to be a final drawing in the hopes that it's more, it's obviously much more shovel ready than nothing, because it's already gone through public comment and it's already had a concept engineering level. But it certainly wasn't ever budgeted for by the town. And unfortunately, the cost estimates in that document, like to do the Crescent, Clifton Park, you know, driveway was like in the range of like $200,000 to $300,000 or something. Like, it was a lot. So like, the interesting thing about Thomas is it's not that far off really from what, from what they landed at. And theoretically, obviously, the developer would be paying for that, which is a benefit to the town. Maybe the town would have to do still some of their own other things in conjunction to it. But anytime you can leverage a developer fund thing part of the project is a good thing.
Yeah, especially if it complements the future state. In other words, it's in the same direction that we think we're going to go in some regards. But we'll see, we'll review it.
I got, I got a sneak peek at it, so it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else from planning department reports?
Nope, we're good.
Okay.
I just want to ask just a question, just generally speaking, because we talked about the part of the car traffic within both the, within both the new project by the CVS and then also the, you know, Harmon Grove. What percentage increase is considered material? Generally speaking, I mean, I shouldn't say, is there a point where it becomes something that can become a basis for as some type of action where the board would be doing something wrong if it didn't actually seriously consider it? And again, it seems like, I mean, again, it seems like what they came back with, with the, with a 10, with a 20, the 20 townhomes is the impact in the grand scheme of things is not going to be significant. But again, I guess my question is, what is a percentage that a good planning board should consider as being material to a developer?
Everything I've researched, because I've asked that question a thousand times over the past 10 years, it's, it's the 100.
Cars.
Hundred, hundred egress, ingress per hour metric. If it's less than 100 and the roadway was built for the volume, which Balltown Road, you can't argue Balltown Road is built for volume way more in excess of what it currently carries. So the percentage might be harder to measure, but the 100 trips, like that just seems to be in other municipalities or just across the state, that seems to be the number.
So it's a struggle, because 100 cars is, is, is essentially nothing to Balltown Road. I mean, 100 cars on Balltown Road is nothing.
Right, no, no, but, but again, it's a.
But 100 cars like on Alton is like probably relatively huge. So you're asking for percentage, right?
Percentage gain.
But.
Percentage gain. That's what I'm talking about.
I don't know of a flat percentage. I know that like what, what struck, what we're struggling, what we do towns generally speaking struggle with. And like to Chris's point, like 100 cars is when it triggers, triggers like DOT has a threshold that if a project's adding 90 or 100 cars, it then is required to go into a full traffic analysis. It's almost like an environmental impact statement where you've done a positive declaration because you're concerned that there's environmental impacts that need to be like figured out. So if you go over, if you generate more than, I think it's 90, or but it could be 100, 100 trips, you have to do a full traffic study, which is like. But like under that, it's really just a summary table where you understand how many trips are being generated. Like where you get at what is going to trigger needing mitigation is when you really need to do like a GEIS. And what you have to do is figure out, because everybody can kind of understand if every single thing that got put in on Balltown Road by itself didn't generate more than 100 cars, you would never have a full traffic analysis. But over time, you're going to have major traffic problems. But it's really difficult, like legally, to defend requiring traffic impacts if you don't have a generic environmental impact study of the area figuring out what the cars are. And that would get to your, we are going to have, if we add eight more cars, it's going to mess up this intersection. You truly can't figure that out without like a GS. It's, it's the norm, I mean, it's a reasonable process. I know there's a bunch of them, like Colony has one in the airport area. And so anytime a development goes in, they've figured out what traffic impacts need to occur over like all of development. And so they, they pay a parkland fee, they pay a, you know, a division fee, and they pay a traffic impact fee. But the only way you can leverage that is to have the study to figure out what needs to be done and how many cars. And then you divide that by developer, and then each unit gets a certain cost associated when it develops. We had a GEIS in that, in the area of where the apartments that were just proposed were going in, but it's old.
Yeah, that, that's more, to me, that's the concerning measure is it's not so much, so it, so it turns out we've approved a lot of projects in and around Balltown Road that some may or may not or could use Balltown Road as a main transit. What concerns me is the path between river or any project between river and, and the river road and the Mohawk River. Because there aren't alternative paths. So when we approve Harmon's Homes and then Harmon's Apartments and there's no secondary egress, all those cars will go to be, they're all going to end up on Balltown Road. There's nowhere else where they can go. So I'm, I'm really concerned about adding an incremental project of 130 in that particular area. Especially when there's no plan by the developer to connect to some other pathway out. Because that to me is a lot more meaningful than adding a 20 and a 30 and a 50, where there's a lot of alternative roads for people to pass through. River to the river doesn't have anything out.
Yeah, but so, and you guys can make that call. You don't have to go with the DOT threshold. Like 138 apartment units is going to be close to generating 100, you know, per whatever. But even if it's not close enough, you can just say, I want a traffic study. They had one.
I can't imagine that we couldn't, that if we got to that point, we wouldn't.
Yeah, yeah.
If we use the data that we got earlier today on Balltown Road, if we extrapolate that data using what we just, you're going to get to the 90.
Harmon Grove did one, did a traffic study for 66 single family homes. Because like a long time ago, well, not that long ago, that property's been through a whole bunch of things. It had a PUD at one point. It was the Indian Meadows PUD and everything. And then they did the GEIS and it was all supposed to be commercial. There was supposed to be a commercial road that went from E1 all the way over to Providence. But somewhere in there, somebody, I think it was Wayne Wagner, wanted it all to be rezoned high density, single, or high density residential R3. And it was a split vote on the town board. And the reason that Amador's 66 single family homes are single family homes in R3 zone is they did restricted that to not allow apartment units. And then they allowed the apartment units on the other side. And this is, we're talking like 20, 30 years ago. It's a pretty long time ago. But they like, they have, when they did that rezone, then they did that rezone and they knew that they wanted 240 apartment units on the one side, because they weren't taking into account wetlands and the 66 single family homes on the other side. They have a traffic impact study from then, but it's not like, it would definitely have to be upgraded. But they do have like some of that data, and that's definitely something that you would take, you would definitely take a traffic study for something like this.
Thanks, Laura. Anything else on updates?
No.
Okay. And then historic preservation town code?
Yep, still working on it. Hopefully we'll have that for you guys at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'll be Rev 6 is what we're working on, right? The input for Mr. Briggs and.
Yeah, yep, is if you want to take into the comments that we had at the last meeting.
Yeah, and I'll take another look at that.
Actually, two meetings ago.
All right. And in COVID-19, anything to talk about?
Uh, not too much, but I just, I appreciate you guys' patience with me today. I was driving back from Maine. Didn't work out the way I thought it was going to work out. But this, I know Seth has been out for the last two meetings, but I know that he will fix it when he comes back in. So it should be working at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I know it's a struggle, especially since we can't go completely virtual because it's not authorized.
Yeah, I don't see that happening. So I think we'll just be doing hybrid for a while, ever. I'll do it forever. I like the hybrid because I do think that it helped, it's helpful to applicants who would like send somebody up from New York City.
Oh, no, it's.
Or like Ohio, like, you know, in some ways it makes a lot of sense to have the hybrid. So I really want to stick with it.
Okay, all right. All right. That's it for reports. And we'll go commission business. Mr. Oster, anything for us tonight?
Uh, there's a good chance I will not be here for the next meeting.
And let us know, okay. And Mr. Diarpino, anything?
Nothing.
Mr. McPartland?
Nothing.
Mr. Scrivett tennis, nothing. Mr. Leflam, sir? Ms. Gold, do you have anything for us?
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Shenfield, anything?
No, nothing.
And I have nothing further tonight. Thank you, everybody. Motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Oster. Do I have a second? A second by Mr. Diarpino. How's the favor adjournment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, hearing no one opposed, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, and thank you to the playing office.
What name were you?
The Belgrade Lakes.
Belgrade, where, where is that?